Let's call this a city council meeting to order. We have a full quorum minus the mayor. We're gonna have an invocation by the pastor, Mike Vasquez, from First Baptist Church.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we do thank you for this evening and for the leaders that you've blessed us with here in Hondo, Texas. I pray for a spirit of love and unity to reign this evening. Lord, I pray that through all the items discussed, Lord, you'd help us to have this attitude to love one another, that we would seek the best for each other, to seek the best for our city, Lord. Ultimately, through all of our actions today, that glory be brought to you. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Remain standing for perpetual leisure.
The United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Citizen comments? None. Great. Moving on to item number six, discussing consider approving the minutes from the city council meeting on September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. Any corrections?
Yes. On page seven. I recuse myself of the discussion and have any meaning or comments. Top of page seven, second sentence.
Is that the only one?
What page?
That's the only one. I think page seven.
Yeah, it looks like he's talking about Pro Yorte.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, he answered my question and they have him down as, you know, that's, I remember that.
Wrong Yorte.
Do I have a motion?
Someone?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Motion passed. Five zero.
Bobby, before we go into the agenda items, I asked at the last council meeting, and I think the council meeting before that, that the city manager's report be put on the agenda, and it's not on the agenda yet. Why isn't it on the agenda?
I will make certain it's on the next agenda. I had it on the last agenda, sir, but I'll make certain it's on every agenda.
That's what you told me last time. I got, I got questions to ask you. That's why I requested, and I thank you for the consensus of the council, that you put that item on the agenda.
I will make certain it's on the agenda, sir.
Well, I'd still like to, being that you didn't put it on there, correct me if I'm wrong, just I could still ask questions on the on city manager's report I did last time.
But there is no city manager report at all on the agenda this time, Councilman. I'm sorry, there isn't.
Scott, you need to understand that whenever we request something, I expect it to be done.
It will be on the agenda, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, can we make sure it's just a standing item?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number seven, discuss and possible action on the resolution by the city, city council relating to the City of Hondo Economic Development Corporation's sales tax revenue refunding bonds series twenty twenty-one, approving the, the bond resolution of the City of Hondo Economic Development Corporation authorizing the assurance of, of such bonds and resolving the matters incident and related to the assurance of the, of such bonds. Judy?
Yes. Good evening, council. This afternoon, we present to you the resolution for the refunding of the sales tax revenue bonds. Initially, when we brought this up for discussion at the prior council meeting, we had stated that it was going to be on a continued tax exempt basis. Upon McCall, McHurst, and Horton's due diligence, they determined that, given the prohibition with a tax exempt basis with private property, private rentals at the SRTC, it would be in federal law compliance to issue the bonds at a taxable basis. It still results in a cost saving of roughly $23,000 compared to the original thirty-five. With me tonight, I have Andrew from SAMCO to answer any additional questions you all have.
Good evening. Andrew Friedman with SAMCO Capital Markets, my partner Martin Klein here, as well as Jay Juarez, your bond attorney from McCall Parker, Houston, Horton. Judy did a great job of summarizing this. The, what originally started out as just a simple bond refunding for savings has turned into a bond refunding for savings and also federal tax law compliance where we can't have private use and tax exempt debt. And so because there have been changes at the, at the jobs training center over the eleven years since it was originally financed, it's been deemed appropriate to refund these on a taxable basis. Taxable interest rates are slightly higher than tax exempt. So where we were looking at, and I handed out a short presentation that showed the preliminary savings results that we had showed to the, the EDC Board of Directors as well as you all. We were contemplating almost $35,000 in savings on a tax exempt basis. That savings has gone down because a higher interest rate is, is appropriate. Twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars to be saved net of cost of issuance, and these will be sold on a taxable basis, which will clear everybody going forward now that we've got that private use on that facility. So again, the, the original bonds set to mature twenty thirty, these bonds will also mature in twenty thirty. So we're not extending the amortization, we're simply swapping for a lower annual payment. You can see that annual payment difference on the bottom left-hand box between five hundred and twenty-five thousand and four thousand dollars a year in savings between now and twenty thirty, when the bonds will finally mature. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have. The EDC board took action at five thirty today. When they met, you as a city council ratified their action, and that's what you're being asked to do here this evening. So they all voted in favor of it unanimously with one extension, and it's before you all to ratify that and push this forward. Happy to answer any questions.
I don't have any questions.
Any questions?
Do we need to do a motion?
Do I have a motion?
I move that we go ahead and approve the bond series twenty twenty-one.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes five zero. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all for your time.
Agenda item number eight, discussing consider approving a change order number zero zero three related to the Fourteenth Street improvement contract with R.L. Jones LP.
Good evening, council. Unfortunately, David couldn't be here today, so I'll be fielding this for him. Information on this one is on June twelfth, I'm sorry, June fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, council approved a contract with R.L. Jones for the reconstruction of Fourteenth Street in an amount not to exceed five hundred and eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars and eight, eighty cents. The contract with R.L. Jones was for the reconstruction of the road, not replacement of utilities. Recently, the staff identified several, and that should be cast iron, not a big difference, cast iron lines at the U and Fourteenth intersection that are too shallow to allow them to reconstruct this street without damaging the lines. On September eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, Public Works employees exploratory hydroexcavations of these lines determine the condition, the routing, and the changes necessary to facilitate putting in the new street without having future issues with the water lines bursting and ruining our new street. Staff determined the need for replacement of a total of, and again, sorry, minor correction, this should be hundred and eighty foot of cast iron water lines along with PVC, with PVC lines, along with the associated fittings, connections, line stops prior to construction, reconstruction of the intersection. Looks like David went ahead and gave y'all a breakdown of the project so far. Of course, your original bids, the change orders one and two, change order number of zero zero three is there, and it has forty-six thousand for the labor. We are estimating the parts to be twen- twenty, and the line stops and tie ends to be fifteen. I'm not sure if you received it, and it's very nominal of a change. David did send the new quote from R.L. Jones. I don't know if it got into y'all's packets. Okay, it's like a hundred and forty dollars difference, so it's forty-five thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars, but I just wanted to make sure y'all had it.
Yes.
I have a question.
Okay. Yes, sir.
When they were, when they were installing, R.L. Jones was installing the, what is it, sewer line?
Yes, sir.
This couldn't have been found and fixed at that same time?
It's in a different area of the street, so it wasn't brought to our attention until they got further down the road. So the sewer line was caught right before they started, after they kind of milled up the front. This part was not till they got to the U and Fourteenth Street intersection. Originally, our understanding, and I say our, I'm going from the water side of this, or this is something we brought up to their attention. Hey, you know, we got some issues here all of a sudden. We thought that they were stopping at U and Fourteenth where the new line had been already constructed, so we were good. Later come to find out that they were going a little bit past, but it sounded like they were just grading it and finishing it off. We didn't know till recently that they were actually reconstructing all of you. Again, it's a street project that just kind of had a little bit of meshing that didn't happen there. I identified that and brought it to David, and David brought it to Scott's attention right off the bat, because like I said, the worst thing we want to do is put in a new street that we pay a good deal of money for and then have these forty, sixty-year-old lines breaking underneath it. And then as they blade it off the top, like I said, it just became a depth issue. I mean, there are literally four inches of cover on some of these lines, so it's no way to really rebuild it without causing damage.
Okay, now.
You say in a different area, I believe for the sewer line, they were digging on the north side of Fourteenth Street, correct?
Yes, sir.
So this water line is on the south side of Fourteenth Street, in the middle? I mean.
So where the sewer line stopped is visually right there, but it's just a little bit further down that block and on the south side that the water line is on.
The whole length of Fourteenth Street?
The, the portion that we need to redo right now?
Right.
No, sir. So.
The one that you're talking about right now, that forty-five thousand dollar plus?
Yes, it is just the intersection of Fourteenth and U, that square intersection, a hundred foot, about a hundred and eighty foot west, and three hundred and forty, don't quote me on that, towards Johnny's Restaurant, actually, that they're redoing the road. They're actually redoing, redoing the road.
But the problem was on the corner of Fourteenth Street and Avenue U. That's what the problem was?
Well, that's part of it. Like I said, all that area is problems. So the lines that run down U, well, let me rephrase, there's two lines on U. There's a twelve inches is fine, it's not going to be a problem for them to rebuild over. The eight inch, or sorry, six inch on the west side was the one that was too shallow. And on Fourteenth Street, right at, at the intersection and going west, on the south side, that's an eight inch that's too shallow. So those were the problem lines. The intersection is full of problem connections.
Why on Avenue U did they go all the way from Fourteenth Street to Fifteenth Street?
And on that, I can't answer. I, like I said, I just don't work on the street side.
Asking where the prob- the problem was on Avenue U and Fourteenth Street. And now they got Avenue U torn up all the way from Fourteenth Street, just a little past Fifteenth Street. So were there any water lines damaged or that needed to be replaced on Avenue U?
Yes, sir. That's part of this.
Okay, my other question is, we approved this project in June, I believe.
Yes, sir.
And we paid thousands of dollars for engineers to, to do the engineering work before we approved this project. Why, why wasn't all this discovered when the engineers were doing all their, their inspections or whatever they do?
Their preliminaries. No, I understand.
Two big ones, sorry. We got two big errors from the time that we approved this project.
Yes, sir. No, no, I understand. Like I said, ideally, that's the way we want these to.
My, my thing is, you know, we spent thousands of dollars for engineers to do it right. And then here we come, we amended this project. We started at fifty, five hundred and eighty-eight thousand, and we already had eight hundred, over eight hundred thousand on it because of errors. Is that what you're saying?
Well, yes, like I said, let me, go ahead.
Not necessarily errors.
Yeah.
If you recall, the first change order had to do with the sewer line.
I understand that, Scott, but the thing is, we paid thousands of dollars for engineers to find out if there was any problems, if anything needed to be corrected, and everything was good, good to go. And in June, we, we approved the project, and now we've having, we're having to spend over two hundred thousand dollars after we paid the engineers to let us know that everything was good to go.
My understanding is that the sewer line was brought to our attention when the project was originally being designed, it was brought to staff's attention. And then there was a decision not to move forward with the replacement.
No, that, that's, that's not true, Scott, because I've been here, and that was before you got here, and, and that's not, the council would never.
I said staff, I didn't, I didn't say council.
David, David confirmed that last time you spoke about this project. That's true.
And then when Stephen brought it to my attention, that's when I decided to bring it to council, because we didn't want to move forward with reconstructing a street, spending a half million dollars out replacing a sewer line that obviously had some significant infrastructure failures. Now, as far as a water line that Jeremiah is speaking about this evening, you know, you're going to uncover some unknowns when you're replacing utilities in parts of a city that are older. And I'm assuming these were utilities that may not have been on a map.
Yes, actually, that's part of the, what I was going to say on this end is, I'm sorry if y'all can't hear me either. Let's see if I can readjust this. A lot of this, you know, going off of the maps is what a lot of engineers do. They don't come out and dig up all the streets, they have the maps. And even on, on our end, they'll, they may be mostly accurate, they're not a hundred percent, we don't know what people did. And honestly, what you saw us do out there on that Saturday, we found a lot of stuff we didn't know was there. And most of the, some of the valves that they found on accident by breaking them when they were doing the road, we didn't know were there, they were buried. So that's what really sets off the alarms, and that's when we got to stop and figure it out. So that's what we've done on this one. Like I said, it wasn't, that it wasn't planned for, it's just in construction, they always pop up, especially when you have something underground, because you can't see it. You're going off of what somebody put on a map years and years ago. And sometimes those even get clarified, they omit them for clarity, so that really makes an issue on your maps.
Okay, I'm gonna ask again, the, the problem was on the corner of Fourteenth Street and Avenue U. Is that correct?
So it's part of the scope of that, Fourteenth and Avenue U, and then U South and Fourteenth West. That's, that's their final portion of their rebuild on the road. Like I said, there's problems at each.
The lines that were, that wouldn't withstand the project, were there on Fourteenth Street and Avenue U, the corner of that? Or were they down south of Fourteenth Street on Avenue U?
They are south on U and west on Fourteenth, starting at the intersection. So it includes all three portions.
Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I've moved that we go ahead and I mean, we started the project, I mean, I guess, we can't stop it now, so yes, I move that we approve that.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, council.
Motion passed you five zero. Judy, you're up.
Would you like me to read the item? Yeah. Okay. Discussing consider ordinance twelve forty-seven oh nine twenty-one, an ordinance of the city council of City of Hondo, Texas, authorizing amendments to the adopted annual budget of the City of Hondo, Texas for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one fiscal year, providing supplemental appropriations to the budget in the following amounts. General funds, reducing eighteen thousand, general fund reducing three hundred and seventeen, thirty-two dollars. General fund increasing revenue two hundred and thirty-four thousand, general fund revenue increase to twenty-six, five thousand, general fund revenue increase sixty-two thousand, five hundred. General fund expense increase twenty thousand, general fund expense removal six hundred and sixty thousand, general fund expense increase two hundred and fifty thousand, general fund expense increase fifteen thousand, general fund expense increase sixteen hundred. Electric fund expense increase at eight thousand, electric fund expense, expense removal at fifteen thousand. Same thing for water wastewater fund, water wastewater fund expense increase six thousand, water wastewater fund expense increase three hundred, six thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars. Wastewater, water fund expense reduction seventy-five thousand, totaling a negative one hundred and seventy thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars, providing servability and providing for other matters related to the subject.
Judy, I have, I have some questions.
Yes, sir.
And I will start with amendment number fourteen.
Okay.
In reference to the perpetual fund?
Yes.
I have two, two questions there.
Mm-hmm.
The first one is, how much overage is in the perpetual fund as we speak?
So on cash on hand or fund balance? Because the perpetual care, the majority of their funds held in a CD, cash on hand, it's really limited. The reason for the amendment is they only bring in roughly like twenty-two thousand dollars a year, but they have a budget of, expense of thirty-eight thousand dollars to the general fund for mowing fees. It's just not possible for the fund to sustain itself at thirty-eight thousand dollar expense in mowing fees to the general fund, which is, we're assuming the cost of a full-time employee, so basically perpetual care is paying for one full-time employee there.
So your cash on hand balance is?
Cash on hand, I'd have to verify, but at their CDs, roughly five hundred and eighty thousand.
Five hundred and eighty thousand?
Yes.
And the fund balance?
I'd have to come back to you on that number.
Okay. Second question for the perpetual care fund on amendment fourteen.
Mm-hmm.
Is there enough in that account to cover costs so as not to transfer out as much money?
So the reason for the amendment is to allow for the fund to sustain itself, as for fund balance, to absorb that cost and in a deficit, absorbing that expense, there's not a, it's very minimal what their cash on hand balance is, given the reason for the amendment, to allow for it to have at least a little bit of a surplus at year end.
Because the last sentence of that amendment fourteen entry here in our packet is the removal of this transfer will allow the perpetual care fund to minimize the possibility of a year-end deficit.
Yes, sir.
In all the years that I've been involved in our, my committee, back to nineteen eighty-eight as a council member, I've never known the perpetual fund to be a deficit. There we are in two thousand twenty-one. I'm reading here that it's gonna be, we're trying to avoid a possible, the possibility of the year-end deficit.
So over the years, they've increased the mowing fees to general fund. I think this year with y'all's adopted budget, it increased it to the thirty-eight thousand before perpetual care paid general fund around nineteen thousand dollars. Each year, they've slowly increased that mowing fee. However, it's just not possible for the fund to sustain itself, it only brings in roughly twenty-two thousand dollars a year for perpetual care.
So if it only brings in twenty-two thousand dollars a year, why are we bringing it down to twenty? Or can't we just leave it at the thirty-eight thousand? That will really avoid, that will really avoid the deficit.
Well, it would cause the deficit. So basically, with the transfer is we expense it, we transfer it over to the general fund to account for it as a revenue in general fund. Reducing that will reduce the expense to twenty thousand. We have a operating expense that we have for a thousand dollars for ads, for cleanup services. It would leave it at a deficit of roughly two thousand dollars. I mean, sorry, a surplus of two thousand dollars. So it'd eliminate the deficit.
Uh, I'm, I'm writing. Excuse me. So that fund has a, has a deficit right now?
It has a budgeted deficit. We haven't done the transfer to general fund yet. We're hoping to reduce that to the twenty thousand, that way to allow for a surplus. If we do do the full thirty-eight thousand that's budgeted, it will cause a deficit of roughly fifteen, seventeen grand. So if you all do not want to amend it, we, you know, we can, and it would cause a deficit in the fund.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Not on that one. No? Nobody? Okay. Judy, amendment twenty. Amendment twenty, you want to amend the budget to reverse and remove the street rehabilitation transfers in the amount of six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So the six hundred and sixty thousand dollars was budgeted.
Yes.
Then taken out to keep the budget in line.
So it's currently still in there at the beginning of the year?
Correct, correct me as we go. Yes?
We haven't taken it out, it still was moved over to the street rehabilitation committed fund. So it's taken out of general and moved over to the committed fund.
So can the six hundred and sixty thousand dollars be directly related to the deficit currently that we're, that our city is experiencing?
It's a large factor, given that it's such a big expense for the general fund.
So the six hundred and sixty dollars, six hundred and sixty thousand dollars can be directly related to the deficit that we are currency, currently experiencing in the City of Hondo?
It's a factor, given that it's a, of course, for the current budget, given that it's a large expense for the general fund, so yes.
If you say it's a factor, I'm gonna take that as a yes. That could have been avoided somehow or another. Again, you're the expert, you're the one that would have to tell me the possibilities of what can be done to avoid such a deficit in that amount. That's a lot of money.
This is following the adopted budget, so on the adopted budget for this year, they budgeted to transfer from the general fund to the committed and restricted for the amount of totaling six hundred and ninety thousand. Six hundred and sixty coming from general, fifteen coming from each the water and electric fund. So this was planned and budgeted, so presenting this to you is our resolution to resolve the deficit and give the general fund in a good position at year end.
But didn't that amount come straight out of, straight out of and only the street cost center, as I'm reading here?
That's where you all budgeted for this year, yes, out of the street cost center. It was five hundred in street rehab, eighty for curb and gutter, eighty for strain and drainage, totaling the six hundred and sixty thousand. So like you stated, this will allow, if we reverse this transfer, it still allows adequate funding for the street rehab. We also have our bond funding as well that we received, and it'll allow for general fund to end in a better light for, for the fiscal year.
Judy, instead of saying that's what you all approved on the budget, can you say that's what the council approved on the budget?
That's, that's what city council.
Two of us then approved it.
Well, this is for the current fiscal year, so FY twenty, twenty twenty-one. Well, this is for the current fiscal year, so FY twenty twenty twenty-one that we approved last September. So council approved it last September.
So, okay. I'll probably ask you again. Amendment twenty-one.
Mm-hmm.
In amendment twenty-one, the way I read it, and please Judy, correct me. It's gonna be a total of thirty thousand dollars that is being added to the already existing deficit in order to balance the electric and water?
So, uh, like the six hundred and sixty thousand, the budget also included a fifteen thousand dollar transfer from both electric and, uh, the water, uh, fund, which totaled the six hundred and ninety thousand. So this is just including in the fund. For this year's budget, it included six hundred and ninety thousand dollars total to go to the committed fund for street rehab. Six hundred and sixty from general, fifteen from water fund, fifteen from electric fund. So this will minimize their expenses, which will actually put them in a better financial position because they won't have that expense in their cost centers.
Well, since I've been here in November, when myself, Councilman Heiser and I came on board, the notes that I've been writing, I've been writing consistently that the electric department, which is our money maker, is in on the plus, plus, plus. To me, meaning it's making money and it's got money to spare. But yet I read here that we're trying to minimize a year-end deficit in the electric and water fund. And I've never known those two departments to be in a deficit, to be in the red. So what has caused that?
So.
All of a sudden in the shift?
So it's just the same budget that was adopted last September for the, for the electric fund that choose, it has a two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollar, uh, deficit budgeted. Water has a deficit of one point two million dollars budgeted for this fiscal year.
Well, I understand what they've got budgeted. But if the electric department is our money maker and has consistently made money, revenue for the city, what changed? What occurred?
So the electric.
That we minimize, that we're trying to minimize, we're trying to avoid a year-end deficit.
The electric is subsidized a lot to the general fund. Each year they roughly pay three million dollars to the general fund. That over time accumulates and really eats down at their fund balances, especially if they're budgeting three hundred thousand dollar deficits each year. Um, of hopefully in this light, in addition to this fifteen thousand dollar removal of transfer, they're looking to end in a surplus position. This will help contribute to that factor. We also have to consider the cost of power is also a substantial expense that the electric fund pays. Just this month alone was close to seven hundred thousand dollars. So yeah, it makes money, but it also has a lot of expenses.
Are we not, and my colleagues, they, please correct me. Bobby, are we not, or you, are we not on a set contract price with CPS on our electrical power?
Correct.
So we are, how? What you just stated, how, how, how is that the, the, the price of electricity?
So it's a set rate, however, given on the amount that they use.
The usage, the usage changes.
It fluctuates on the usage of the customer. So of course.
We just got done, we just got done with August.
Yes, of course, we just had the summer months, which are our highest CPS bills, uh, for the year.
Yeah, but then again, if, if our CPS bill is going up, so is, uh, money coming in that's being charged to the customer, it should be coming up. So what, wha- what's the difference?
Revenue increases as well.
A year or two years ago.
Revenue increases as well with their usage, you're correct. This is just to allow for, since we have a budgeted two hundred and sixty thousand dollar deficit, to minimize that, uh, that effect, especially since we have sus- sufficient funding for the street rehab now with the bond proceeds.
Okay. All right. Moving on Judy, amendment number twenty-two. Amendment twenty-two is to amend the budget to allocate additional two hundred and fifty thousand dollars
To the admin.
Currently absorbed the cost centers overage in relation to personnel expenses and capital expenses.
Yes.
How much would be your estimate or your guesstimate for personnel?
Personnel, it's roughly a hundred and ten thousand, uh, given the severance package to previous personnel that we had to expense out this year. The other cost is, um, the cost for the capital outlay for the remodel of the old PD, the whole six hundred thousand that was requested was not included. So to do that project, we completed the project and this is the full cost of the remodel. So half of it being the personnel expense.
So the a hundred and ten thousand dollars can be attributed to did you say severance package?
For previous administration.
For the previous administration? So uh, Bobby would come into this one and Johnny, us three are new. So when something like that happens, they don't approve an amendment to the budget to be taken out the next business day or that would give, I, I think that would give us a clearer picture of where we stand dollar-wise as opposed to doing it at year end. The week before we start a new fiscal year. And it would really help us analyze and maybe offset these deficits earlier in our fiscal year. I, I mean, y- you're the finance person.
Yeah, so the general fund's at a surplus currently of a hundred and thirty-two thousand. This is just the cost center as itself. That way, when we get to the audit, you know, the cost center isn't at a deficit for the year, it's within budgeted amounts. So the general fund as a whole currently is at a surplus without any remaining expenses for the year of roughly a hundred and thirty thousand. This will just allow for the cost center to be within budgeted amounts.
Well, how about the increases in salaries that have occurred this year? Can that be part of the two hundred and fifty thousand and can that be part of the two hundred and fifty thousand?
Uh, not out of, out of administr- administration. The only personnel that comes out of there currently is the city manager, um, info technology, all of those, uh, individuals.
Cause when the, when the Hondo PDO building was being, when that process was starting to be discussed, unless I understand what we did is wrong or I didn't get it straight. But we approved that building to be remodeled and we approved an amendment to take the money out and pay these guys that were doing it. So now here it is September the twenty-seventh. Yeah, September the twenty-seventh. And we're just now allocating two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for personnel. And you did say the remodel of the old PD office. Who makes the decision? Scott, uh, to wait and do these transactions?
Typically, when you get towards the end of fiscal years, these are amendments that majority of city councils go through. Uh, I mean, we could go back and amend the budget every time. That we have an expenditure that's in question. But these were expenditures that were authorized by council throughout the year.
I understand that we're authorized by council throughout the year.
Right.
But the deficit picture
Well, what we can do, I mean, if, if council wants, at least on a monthly or quarterly basis, we can come back and look at if the budget needs to be amended based upon expenditures and bring those amendments before.
It's gotta be done more than once a year because our deficit looks ugly. It's gonna be more than.
Your deficit.
I mean, the deficit has been discussed for the last month and a half.
Sir, your deficit looks ugly and, and Judy's mentioned this because the budget that was adopted at the beginning of the fiscal year, I think you had a million dollars deficit in water. And then you also had a deficit that you adopted, uh, in the general fund as well.
General was roughly four hundred and forty thousand dollar deficit. Currently, the general fund is at a surplus. These amendments are just to put the cost centers in budgeted positions within the cost center. So the fund as a whole isn't at a deficit. Uh, it's just so that administration compared to budgeted amounts is within budget.
What will these amendments do to the deficit that council approved that's been needed? What?
So this is for the current budget. Um, so it's the budget that we adopted, uh, council adopted last September. These amendments would of course minimize that deficit or substantially reduce where we honestly should. We should end at a surplus.
You, you the budget that was approved had a four hundred and forty thousand dollar deficit. What are these amendments gonna do to the current budget that council approved?
Of course, we don't have complete end of year expenses, but it should be roughly six hundred thousand dollar surplus in general. Uh, wa- electric should be at roughly a hundred and seventy thousand dollar surplus. I don't have exact numbers until we finalize the year end.
For amendment twenty.
Oh, go ahead.
When I discussed this deficit last week, and I stated that for the past, at least past five years, we had never approved a, 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 a budget that's in a deficit like they approved this year of four hundred and forty thousand dollars. You said that you were gonna bring me that information and show me or show us where the city had been in a deficit situation in the past five years. Did you get that for me?
No, sir, I have not.
This twenty twenty budget that was approved was a deficit budget.
The new budget that we approved, uh, last, that brought to council.
Was balanced.
Maybe, maybe you don't understand what I'm talking.
Was approved balanced.
Was approved. The one, the one for la- last year was approved as a deficit.
Yeah, the current budget were.
Understand that. That was last year's. We weren't here last year.
This year.
That's what I'm talking, last.
The one that we voted on last week was balanced.
Was a deficit.
No, it wasn't. Not, not twenty, not, no, it wasn't.
Judy's saying it, it was.
And the budget that we've approved is that so much pushback has, is, is now, is a surplus.
It was, it was a balanced budget.
The one moving forward next month.
So the one that we adopted last Monday was a balanced budget.
Yes.
All across the board.
Right.
The budget that was adopted last September twenty twenty for this fiscal year we're currently in, right? Cause it doesn't until the thirtieth was budgeted at deficits for general fund, electric and water. And perpetual care.
Okay, amendment twenty-three. Are, are you done, Sean?
Yeah, go ahead. You're gonna say something, I am.
For amendment twenty-three, Judy.
Mm-hmm.
It's fifteen thousand dollars to the finance cost center to, um, absorb the current personnel expense overage for personnel capital expenses. Is that, did we add somebody for fifteen thousand dollars?
In that cost center as well, we had personnel leave. So of course we have a, a larger payout with personnel, um, for that cost center.
We added a body for the personnel?
No, we had personnel leave.
Finance, I mean, for the finance?
We had personnel leave. Um, our previous chief finance officer resigned. So that results in payouts for leave time, um, personnel expenses.
Okay, hold on. I have a question, Judy.
Mm-hmm.
So, so basically all these amendments are to clean up the current budget that ends on Thursday?
Yes, exactly. They're all to just clean up the cost centers, make the cost centers balanced, get them at surplus positions to end this fiscal year in a good light and a good financial standing rather than deficit positions. Especially if we have substantial funding for the street rehab. Let's get that back into general fund and end it at a good light, uh, for the fiscal year.
I agree. Thanks for clarifying.
Judy, amendment twenty-four. Do we have an emergency services?
Yes, we have a emergency services cost center. It's five oh seven in the general fund. Uh, it's over on its contingency for purchases related to the radio beacon rehab. They had to do some, um, repairs on the radio beacon.
Repairs on what?
On the radio beacon for the siren system.
I remember that discussion. I, I thought that the only time that the city got involved with those sirens, right?
Mm-hmm.
Is because they were on city property, but they belonged to the county to fix them with their own monies. Remember when this one didn't go off? That we were talking about that, Bobby?
No, I remember vaguely. Yeah, that.
So now, I mean, and this, sixteen hundred dollars is sixteen hundred dollars. Uh, uh, did something change from whenever the tornado was? That that was a hot issue? That the county's responsible for that, not the city.
If I.
Not even monetarily.
If I remember correctly, um, chief may be able to add to this, but I think we split expenses with them. We also monthly pay a rental basis where we have the tower rental fee each month as well. Uh, this was for a repair. It was roughly five thousand dollars at the beginning of the year, if I'm remembering correctly. Um, and I believe we split expenses with the county on those sirens.
So the city is responsible for fixing those?
I believe we split the cost with the county.
My final question, Judy.
Mm-hmm.
What will be the final outcome? What will be the final deficit if all these items are approved?
So all the funds will, with these items will end at a surplus position. Uh, once the year end closes and we finalize expenditures for the year, um, I could give you a definite, definite number. But as for now, with these amendments, it would put all of the funds at a surplus position. Um, given that no expenses dramatically increase.
With your projected.
Yes.
With your projected expenses, what you'll, you'll, this will have a surplus?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the goal, to get the city at a good financial standing for the end of this fiscal year. Um, regardless of the adopted budget with the deficits.
And what is it gonna do to the twenty twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two budget?
This won't have any effect on the twenty twenty-two budget. This is just for the current fiscal year.
But don't we show a deficit in the twenty-one, twenty-two budget?
No, sir, it's, it's balanced for the, what was presented was a balanced budget.
We got last week, we were at deficit of four hundred and forty thousand dollars?
That was for this fiscal year. So the one that was adopted last September. The new one that was presented was balanced. And then we had discussed that I would bring amendments to you all to end this fiscal year at a good light as well.
So before us three, Councilman Vella and Councilman Villa and our previous people here, they approved what you and Scott are saying. Scott, they approved a deficit budget.
Yes, sir.
I don't remember reading that in the paper. I do not remember that it was a deficit budget.
That's why I asked, that's why at the last meeting, when I was talking about the budget.
And if it wasn't a deficit budget, it has to be corrected.
In the budget, in the deficit situation that I know of in the past five years. And I don't know, Scott thought that I didn't hear him. He said, I can get that information for you and he didn't get it. I wanna see it because I don't. I'm going, this is the fourteenth budget that I've seen in front of me that's been put up for me to either approve or disapprove. And I have yet to approve a budget that was in deficit. And you prove me if I'm wrong, Scott.
Judy, can you supply those budgets?
Approved a budget that's in a deficit and I'm going on my eighth year now.
I can definitely get y'all some information tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That'd be great.
I, I agree with Bobby. We need to look at that because this has been publicized on that little camera that Jamie's got. on that little camera that Jamie's got, we're being watched on Facebook, and we're talk, wha- wha- what we're saying now is that the previous council and administration didn't know what the hell they were doing because they approved a deficit budget. That's not right. I don't care how you slice the pie, how you cut the cake, how you pour the soda, it's not right. So let's try and fix it. Uh, whatever Bobby asked you for, I agree with that too. We're fixing the budget the wrong way, in my eyes. Thank you, Judy, for your time.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Judy.
Looking for a motion?
I would like to make, make, to make a motion to approve ordinance one two four seven dash zero nine dash two one for the budget amendments.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Passes three to two.
And look for another veto on this, I know it's coming.
Agenda item number ten, uh, we discuss and reconsider ordinance number twelve forty-four dash zero nine dash two one, an ordinance making appropriations for the support of the city of Hondo for fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty-one, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, and adopting an annual budget for the city of Hondo for the twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year and setting an effective date.
Good evening, mayor and council, mayor Potem and council. Uh, this evening, you're reconsidering the budget that you adopted last week on September twentieth. Uh, Mayor Danner, on September twenty-second, exercised his authority under Article Three, Section three point oh four, subsection two of the city charter to veto the action you had taken last week in approving the budget for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. The reasons for Mr. Danner vetoing the budget are as follows. Lack of funding for very needed equipment for the police department, lack of discussion for the planning of the usage of the American Rescue Funds, no placement in the budget for the positions of Assistant City Secretary, Administrative Assistant to the City Manager, and Assistant Public Works Director, and as last reason, excessive increase in the compensation for the city's Human Resource Director. If council does not take any action on approving this evening's budget, there are two consequences to not taking action and reaffirming your action from last week. One. Expenditures that we end, we end up taking after October one will all have to be approved by city council, and the second being the property tax rate. When you establish your budget, that's such a property tax rate for every year. If we don't have a budget in place at the end of the current fiscal year, you're either gonna go to the no new revenue tax rate or the tax rate we had last year, what that we're currently in, and it's gonna be the lower of the two. And typically, that's gonna be your no new revenue tax rate, which is about point four six cents, and that means our revenue is gonna decrease by roughly a hundred thousand dollars for the upcoming fiscal year. So this evening, we're looking for council to reaffirm, uh, the action they took last week.
I'd like to talk about the, the Hondo Police Department. I mean, I, I, I have comments about all four of these, but, you know, it, it, last two weeks ago, three of us voted against, uh, some, some, uh, request for the police department, and it didn't come from staff, it came from the mayor and maybe had some support from some council members. So it, 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 it came out like we would just approve all of, get all of these things, you know, body armor, uh, backup cameras, vests, I mean, I'm sorry, uh, like, um, handheld radios. So after going back and the, the, the next day, I, I asked Scott to work with, get some information from Brian on what he actually needed. And he doesn't need all that money for the handheld radios, the twenty-eight thousand one hundred dollars. The body, the body cameras, the body worn cameras are in the budget for this next year that, that the mayor vetoed. Okay, that's forty-five thousand dollars that, that they could spend next week if, if the, if the budget wasn't vetoed. The body armor protective vest, after Brian providing information to Scott, and Scott provided to me in my analysis, we need twenty-two thousand five hundred. That's how much we need for vests, we do not need thirty-two thousand dollars. As far as the extra position goes, in looking at, at some, some things online, and looking at twenty different cities that are comparable size to Hondo, and how many offer, officers they have, and calculating a, you know, officers per thousand citizens, out of the twenty, Hondo was number two, at three officers per thousand citizens. They go as low as one point four, and, you know, Crystal City, for instance, has one point four. Some of the bigger cities on the border are less than Hondo als- also. So what that tells me is that when, when this, when these requests came to council, they, it wasn't completely vetted by, by the one that requested it. And so to veto a budget based on information that's not even valid is, is, it's irresponsible. And the citizens, you know, we're, if, if we don't, if we don't have a super majority tonight to, to pass the budget, we're gonna lose a hundred thousand dollars in revenue. And, I mean, I, you know, that's just one example, I mean, we've, I mean, we've talked about the three positions that the city manager has said we do not need, but the mayor and some on council say we need them, people that aren't involved in day-to-day operations. The, the, the cost, the loaded cost of those three positions is two hundred thousand dollars. What are the citizens of Hondo gonna get for that two hundred thousand dollars of tax money that could go to something else? We don't need the, we don't need the help.
That, that, that's gonna go to salaries. There's been gone to salaries.
Yeah, and then else, then else will have to be cut.
There's another thing on here, you, you're talking about cities comparable to Hondo. I don't care what Crystal City does, or what Uvalde does, or anybody, I'm concerned about Hondo, Texas. If they were to have one officer or two officers for every hundred, let them do, I'm concerned about Hondo.
I know, and we're, and we're different, we have more, we have more, we're not like Crystal City, that's what, that's the point I'm trying to make, we don't have one point four officers per thousand people, we have three. We're, we're different than them, you have to, you have to analyze things like that, you have to look at comparable.
What you're getting to is that we're spending too much money on officers that other cities don't, don't, don't have. Like I said, I don't care what other cities do, my concern is Hondo, Texas, and the citizens of Hondo, not the citizens of Uvalde or Crestor Hill or Pierceville. Hondo is my priority.
Let, let him, let him finish.
Yeah, so, so, so that was, that was based on, uh, that analysis, the, uh, I mean, I guess we can, we, we're gonna, we probably need to talk about the American Rescue Funds too, but I, I just want everybody to understand the severity of us not adopting this budget tonight, and as a citizen, I'm very disappointed because there's gonna be severe consequences for that, and, and I guess we'll, as we get to these other ones, we can, I'll, I'll chime in.
That's your opinion.
Councilman Vella, I have a question, but please ensure that I'm not interrupted.
Go ahead.
That, that email, Scott, that you sent us, who, um, who provided you that information in reference to, um, the vetoing of the budget, the, uh, property tax rate, the expenditures? As far as if due to the veto, what you said here about the property taxes, who, who gave you that information?
I asked Jesse and Victoria for their opinions.
Well, I did too, we think alike. So, what are the consequences of not having an approved budget by the end of the fiscal year? You asked Jesse and who?
Victoria.
Victoria was hired by you as a personnel special counsel, not budget items. So if that's who gave you the information, you're errant. But what are the consequences of not having an approved budget by the end of the fiscal year? That's one of your questions. The response that you got, if a city does not approve the budget by September the thirtieth, then the budget for the prior fiscal year will apply. In this case, if the council does not approve the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, then the city will again use the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty-one for the, for, for the current fiscal year. As with any city budget, the council may later amend this budget, but such, but any such amendment would also be subject to the mayor's possible veto. That was question number one. Question number two that you asked. What happens with the city property tax rate if the city council, that the city council approved last week? You said that the tax rate adopted last week is not going to affect. In other words, the no venue, the no new re- revenue tax rate would go into effect for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two at point four six, decreasing the city revenue by one hundred thousand, three hundred twenty-two dollars. The response that you received. The city's twenty twenty-one, twenty-two tax rate was adopted by a separate ordinance from the budget. The tax rate ordinance was also considered after the budget ordinance as required by the tax code. The mayor did not veto the ordinance setting the tax rate, so it remains valid. The city will therefore collect its revenues at the rates set under this ordinance.
Yeah, but the tax rate.
Question number three. What happens when staff has no legal authority to spend money after September the thirtieth? It says here, the answer that you received, if a new budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two is not approved, then the city and staff will operate under the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty-one budget. Unlike the federal government, there is no government shutdown if the new city budget is unapproved in the city of Hondo. You, sir, completely disregarded the information that was provided to you by our legal advisor, by our legal team. This is what you put out, and this is what they put out. You completely ignored our legal advisors. You made up, trumped up these responses so that you could sway and get us to approve what you have in mind, and Scott, that is not right. That, I see that as lying to the city council, lying to the people that you work for, sir.
Wait a minute, is, is, let me ask you a question.
It's right here.
Is, is the no new revenue tax rate, will that become effective on October first if we don't approve the budget? Is that, is that a fact? I wanna hear, I don't want, okay, that's a fact, we're gonna lose, we're gonna lose money, she, she, it's not a fact, 'cause she's saying yes, you're saying no.
But it's not, it is not, uh, and I, we, you know, we.
She, she's not legal counsel, she's personnel.
It doesn't matter, I can listen to whoever I want to, I want as many opinions as I can.
She's personnel issues.
Well, we're listening to Jesse, Jesse, you have the floor.
Correct, the, the, as I indicated in the email to Scott, that the tax code requires that, uh, that the tax, uh, rate ordinance be approved after the budget is considered. That set, that criteria was satisfied, the fact that it was vetoed later on doesn't, doesn't negate the fact that it satisfied the code requirement. So, no, the, the ordinance as, as approved by council last week will go into an.
So they're not tied together?
No.
No, they're not. Now, if, if council had not approved a budget ordinance at all, say that there had not been a majority to approve the budget, and there had been no ordinance considered at all, say, then you would not have satisfied the tax code, and that ordinance would then be invalid, but that's not what happened. But in fact, what did happen is you approved the budget, and then the code requires you, that you then consider the ordinance afterwards setting the tax rate, and that's what did happen. Now, uh, if for some reason you don't get a super majority tonight, and you end up using the old budget, then the surplus monies will just be surplus monies in the general fund, they can be appropriated later on by budget amendment, so the money would be there, it just be, be up to the council later on to appropriate them.
No, I just, I wanna know, I, I wanna, I, I just, I'm, I'm very uncomfortable right now because I see, and I don't care what anybody says, I see her nodding her head yes, I see you saying no, uh, you know, I, 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 I just don't know what to, to believe on this tax rate thing, 'cause it, it, if the tax rate's gonna.
Who, who's nodding their head? Which she is nodding her head? Which she, there's silver right there.
Sorry, I forgot her name.
Victoria.
Victoria.
Victoria's not, Victoria was hired for personnel, not for, for legal.
I, that doesn't mean she doesn't know what she's talking about, so I, I, I have every right to listen to whoever I want to.
With, with all due respect, can we get Frank's opinion?
Frank reviewed the memo that I wrote to this.
For Frank?
This is from Frank.
Okay.
And Scott disregarded most of the information that he was provided, that's why he came up with all this, the Councilman E. Partis reading. Y'all should have gotten this email too. We're not the only ones with this email, it, it went to y'all too.
I know, I have it.
Did y'all not read it?
I read, I read every, all my emails, Johnny.
Well, y'all should understand what it said then. He went against what legal counsel asked him to do, and he's trying to make us think that he's right and legal counsel isn't right.
I move that we go into executive session to discuss the budget. Can we do that?
Well, I would like, I would like to make a motion, it's not on the agenda right now.
Oh, it's not on the agenda?
I would, I would like to make a motion to add, if I can, tell me if I can, I would like to make a motion to add twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars to the current budget, the proposed budget for, uh, body armor for the police department. Could you do that? I could do that, right?
If the mayor Potem was considering a motion at this time, he, Ed was asking to go into closed session at the time, we could do that when we come back at a closed session, because we're, if, if.
I didn't know we were going to motion now.
I don't know, he was considering a motion before we got.
I, I'd like to go into closed session to discuss this.
And we can do it under consultation with attorney regarding legal issues pertaining to the budget. Okay, we could certainly do that.
Can we do that if it's not on the agenda?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
Yes, we can, uh, that generally, generally includes a, a, a general clause to move into closed session for any item on the agenda, and so we can.
So Jesse, there's not gonna be a, an approval or disapproval right now for item, item ten that we're on?
We, we, uh, yes, councilman, when we probably come out of closed session, uh, I'm not sure specifically what council, uh, member Vella wants to discuss in closed session, but he certainly can do so, uh, discuss with, uh, legal counsel regarding the budget. Uh, I feel we're probably just gonna break for a few minutes to go into that, and then we'll come back and.
But that's, that's not in executive session.
No, we, we look at the very bottom of the agenda, usually we have, we usually include the, a general right to go, move into closed session for any item on the, on the agenda, and so, and the close.
Well, m- maybe I'm misunderstanding, Jesse, in executive session, there's not an item on executive session for the budget to be discussed.
That's correct, it's not, it's not a scheduled, a calendared or an agenda item in closed session, but you can go into closed session to discuss any item on the agenda, which is what we would do here temporarily and then come back out. If you look at the very bottom, we usually indicate reserve the right to convene an executive session in accordance with the Open Meetings Act under any of these items you see, and in, in one of those would include consultations with attorney, in this case, it sounds like councilmember Vella would like to discuss a issue pertaining to the budget.
So, so if we go.
Are we going into executive session now or until we finish the agenda?
We can go in right now temporarily and then come back.
And then come back out, then we'll go back in.
And then go back to executive session.
And then back in later again, yes, sir, yes, sir, we can. So if, uh, mayor Potem would like to go into closed session, then we can.
I make a motion to move into executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes five.